Well, good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock in Gardner, Kansas. I'm going to call the city council meeting to order. If everybody would like to stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united up, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do certainly appreciate the full house this evening. Clint Barney, who's new on our utility advisory commission, came up and asked all of us to please speak into our microphones because I believe he said artillery ears.
Yeah, cool.
Okay. So, we're going to try and do a better job of that this evening. But thank you all for coming this evening. And, you know, you're welcome to all these council meetings, and we always like to see a full house, so feel free to come back at any time. The first item, the first presentation item, we're going to start the presentations this evening, is a presentation and discussion of the compensation study. During the 2015 budget process, the governing body directed staff to complete a compensation study. The 2015 budget includes $230,000 set aside for salary adjustments. The city solicited proposals from qualified vendors and conducted interviews, and we selected Gallagher Benefit Services to complete the compensation study. And I'm going to invite Gail Meriwether from Gallagher Benefit Services to come forward and present an overview of the compensation study. Gail, good evening to you.
Good evening.
And yeah, if you could take a minute and tell us a little bit about yourself before we get started.
Thank you. I'm not sure if I should stay turned this way or actually turn around because I understand there's a big crowd because everybody's interested in the comp study.
Ah, the microphone's in front of you, but you're going to have to face this way.
So then, for starters, my name is Gail Meriwether. I've been a consultant in the Kansas City area for about 20 years. My area of expertise is human resources, in particular, compensation, performance management, organization development, and employment law. I do a lot of compensation studies. Right now, I'm working on the state of Rhode Island, Detroit, Michigan, the city itself, Olathe, finished a project for Hutchinson, Kansas, working with KCAT, Kansas City Area Transportation Authority. So, I'm really busy with municipality work, and I'm pleased that we've had the opportunity to also do this work for Gardner, Kansas. Our firm, Gallagher Benefit Services, has been around for about 80 years. Their area of expertise is employment-related property risk kinds of insurance as well as health benefits. In 2001, Gallagher purchased my firm, along with my two partners, as the very first human resources consulting practice. They wanted to compete with Aon, Mercer, the other consulting practices who also offered human resources services. So, in a nutshell, that's me.
Fantastic.
And now, if you don't mind, we'll dive right into the compensation study. And I think, yes, the clicker will work for me. Our objective through this process was really to identify and understand internal equity to make sure that the structure that we developed for the city of Gardner was also externally competitive with those entities to which you recruit and lose employees. We also wanted a system that would be easy to administer. In order to thoroughly understand the positions here at Gardner, we reviewed the job descriptions, org charts, but probably one of the most important processes was that we had time and we took the time to interview each of the directors, and they were individual interviews where we had the opportunity to understand from them personally what issues they were facing within their departments, what kinds of issues or concerns that their employees had. So, we asked a series of questions as to what jobs are you losing, what jobs are difficult to fill, who are you competing with, with certain talent, et cetera. So, it gave us an even better feel of the city and its philosophy. After that, we went back to conduct a market analysis. In so doing, we referenced a number of published surveys. We looked at the Bureau of Labor Statistics for the state of Kansas. We also looked at comp data, state of Kansas as well, Kansas Wage Survey, the Kansas City Metropolitan Area in particular, Johnson County and Kansas City. We also took a look at the Mid-America Regional Council. That's an important survey to me because for the past 15 to 16 years, I have provided for that survey private sector data for those public sector jobs to ensure that as we look at what the market might be, we understand that we can also lose certain jobs to the private sector, in particular, IT jobs, HR jobs, et cetera. We also referenced the Towers Watson compensation theory in particular, management and supervisory report, office support, professional administrative, professional specialized, technical skill report. And again, for those jobs that you could lose to the private sector, we looked at not-for-profit governmental entities as well as the private sector to gain data for those positions. We also referenced Wage Wizard. You all might know Wage Wizard by salary.com. Part of the reason we always look at that is because, for the most part, employees will look. They have the opportunity to get a free report. We buy the service a little bit more for us. Let me also say, because I got a lot of questions around the Mid-America Regional Council, just who did we compare the city of Gardner to? And I will say to you, it really depended on the job. So then, did we use Kansas City for certain jobs? Did we use Johnson County, Jackson County, Overland Park? There are jobs that you will lose, i.e. police department, fire, some public works jobs that are comparable throughout the metropolitan area. When it comes to those director-level positions, no. We don't necessarily make comparisons to Johnson County, or Jackson County, or the city of Kansas City because the span of control and the complexity of the jobs don't necessarily compare well with the city of Gardner. Okay? So, with that, oh, so then after we've gathered all of the market data, this is not a part of my slide, but let me just approach the council so that you can follow me a little closer. What we have going around for the council is simply what we are proposing as the salary ranges. You will note there, we've got the current ranges, and we've got the ranges that we are proposing. When you take a look at your current ranges and look at those midpoint progressions, you will see that it lacks symmetry. You might have one midpoint 7% from the other, another one maybe 40%. That kind of lends itself to an awkward kind of a schedule. It's going to be difficult to then determine which level, the next level of progression might go in. And so, if you'll see what we're proposing, my midpoint progressions, I think, are a consistent 14%. You'll also notice when it comes to the width, the spread from minimum to maximum, the current system that you're using now has a 45% range spread. What we typically see in the marketplace is a 50% range spread. So, we've just been consistent throughout the entire piece of work and used a 50% range spread. And that's simple. It's 20% on either side. So, after we developed the structure that's in front of you, we called back to the city and asked if we could have each employee's name, their job title, and their current base pay. And then, we slotted each employee back in the range that corresponded with their job description. Then, we ran what we like to call comp ratio. It's simple. It's a comparison of the employee's actual salary to the midpoint of the range because the job that they actually hold determine which range they would go back in. And then, we ran those numbers to understand what your overall comp ratio is. And so, on average, for the city of Gardner, you've got about a 93% comp ratio. So, the average group of employees are paid at about 93% of the market midpoint. Typically, that's about right. Our biggest concern are those employees who would be paid less than 80% of the marketplace, which means they are paid below the minimum of the range that we have slotted them back in. You do have a few employees who are paid below the minimum of the range. I think it's only about three or four, and the total to bring them up to the minimum of the range is about $4,000. Now, while the average is 93%, there were a number of employees whose comp ratios were less than 93%. So then, we took a look at that group of employees who had comp ratios that were 90% or below, and there's a significant number of those. And in order to bring them up to about that 90% comp ratio, it would cost you about $171,000. Here's a caveat. We don't recommend that you just do that in one fell swoop. We absolutely recommend that you take a look at performance, length of service, and tie those kinds of pieces of data to how you make a decision to bring those employees up towards that 90%. We also suggest that you do it over a period of time, that it's not necessarily done in one fell swoop. So, with that, we've also had a conversation with the city about a performance management system that would be fair and consistent. So, we've developed a salary increase matrix that would absolutely tie performance to the compensation structure. When I said we have developed, we developed the salary increase matrix, we spent time with the directors and with the direct reports of each of those directors to get input on a performance management system. One that would identify job objectives and standards of performance be this is why I hired you, and the other portion of it would be this is the culture of our organization, whether it's teamwork, collaboration, et cetera. So, we've gone through that exercise. Any questions?
Yes, I have a question. So, can you talk a little bit about what the employees that are kind of in that 90% comp ratio, what levels do those mainly fall in?
It's across the board.
Okay.
It is absolutely across the board, so it isn't as if you've got a lot at those lower levels or at the mid. It is absolutely across the board.
Okay.
And if I'm not mistaken, it's probably about 45 or 50 employees.
Probably.
Can you see what like you were? No?
Don't listen to him, just get it.
Okay.
Sure. And I don't believe that you have any employees who are paid above the maximum of the range. If you do, it's only by maybe $30 or $40. And forgive me for not knowing definitively, but I've got Hutchinson, Ada, and everybody else running through my head since we're finishing all of these projects at the same time. Any other questions? Because this is my very last slide.
So, what are next steps for us as far as implementation of the findings of this? And how do we tie it to the performance of the employees?
Right.
So that we're...
Question, sorry. You talked about the 90% of comp ratio.
Yes.
Kind of being this target, but could we also, based on time and service experience, have people that should really be paid more than that 90%?
Let me tell you what we tried to do as it relates to levels of complexity, and this is one of the things that I discussed in depth with my directors. If they had a position, let's just say, an accountant, and it was just one job description that said an accountant, I brought them back the data, especially from Towers Watson, that identified accountants ones, twos, threes, and fours. So, it gave me the opportunity, when we initially brought the data back, to say, hopefully there's not a, well, there's not a Peggy in the room. So, Peggy's pay was substantially above or below, and we had targeted, let's say, an accountant three, my question then to my directors was, tell me what's going on with Peggy's job? What did I miss? And so, then that's where we've gotten the opportunity to go back and understand, you know, Peggy was probably new, or Peggy had more tenure than we've already addressed where that level of complexity would be. So, I'm thinking now, and my directors are familiar faces, two of them at least are in the room, that we, there's three because I saw another one walk in, but I'm thinking that we've got the employees kind of where we believe they are. And so, even with placing them where we believe they are, we still are around this $171,000.
Okay.
How much consideration was made as you were reviewing each of these that internally, just from Gardner's perspective, that employees were aligned with the proper salary tier based on their qualifications and their experience for the particular position?
That's, now, let me just say, Mr. Freeman, that was a question that I could not answer initially because all I was dealing with was job description.
Certainly.
And so, after I placed everybody where we believe that they should be from the job description, then that's when I solicited and got answers to the question that you just posed from the directors that I had the opportunity to spend time with. I will give you an example, probably not, but I'll give you an example. There was a position that I believe that the position could possibly have been a purchasing agent, but because the job did not require a degree, because of the nature of how that job functioned within the purchasing department, it's more like a purchasing generalist. So, we've kind of already gone through to whittle our way through, this really is what this job is. Now, let me also say, that doesn't mean that we eliminated the market data that we'd already provided for that job. That data is still there. So, there's what we like to call a level of complexity guide. So, the city has back more data than I think they will ever need. But what we wanted to make sure of is, as the city grows, as employees or the directors recognize that they need a different skill set, one that offers more complexity, those jobs are currently in the structure. And I did that because if I get a phone call two years from now that says, Gail, we'd like for you to take a look at this particular job, more than likely, I'm going to be looking at surveys that are going to be newer than when we finish this work. Which I should also say, the structure that we've developed, the expectation is that it will be adjusted on an annual basis. So, it's not like I did it this year, and then it sits around and it stays for the next five years. I will be talking to Matt or whomever to say, you need to adjust each of the salary ranges by this amount according to the market. That's some of the data that I provide for Mark as well.
Can you talk a little bit about, and I don't know if this is, Cheryl, let us know if there's a different plan for this, and Chris asked about follow-up steps, but the performance measurements and the analysis and things that you've helped put together and where that stands and how it's going to be presented at the very least?
May I?
Sure.
Okay. What we've done as it relates to performance management, we asked, I kind of chatted a little bit with the directors initially in our interviews about performance management. How often do you do it? How many employees do you have? How many direct employees? What are your thoughts? Is pay tied to performance? Should it be? And then, with that next level, I spoke to them about, if you had an ideal system, how many ratings would it be? Here's a universe of core competencies, and I will say, that universe of core competencies comes from the universe that we typically use from municipalities. And so, they selected, and they did it independently. So, it wasn't a group discussion so that they could say, because sometimes we get people who will, you know, take over the conversation, and some of my other folks won't have time to talk. So, they did it independently. They filled out the forms and gave them back to me, and I did the math and said, these are basically your core competencies. Now, the core competencies for the leadership group, we developed those. They include collaboration, executing, business judgment, ethics and values, exactly what we expect from the leadership. And so, we've kind of finished the framework. I've brought it back for Cheryl to take a look at it, see what questions she has, and then we'll bring it back to the directors. And I will bring it back again individually for them to kind of take a look at what we've gotten, and then give me their feedback, and then we'll go from there. What's important is that we will ask, or the system currently asks, what are those major three to four outcomes of the job? Not getting into task, but what are you responsible for? I don't want eight. I really don't want seven. I want to know the major outcome because sometimes we get bogged down in the task, and I want them to focus on the major outcomes. It won't cover every aspect of the job, but those pieces that are crucial to ensure that we maintain the budgets that we need to maintain. And I should also say the giveaway, because I've been doing it for so long, I kind of already have a ton of job objectives and standards of performance for almost, for every job that a municipality will have. Because simultaneously, I'm doing the exact same thing for the city of Ada. And so, then it gives Gardner the opportunity to kind of look at my prototype and say, yeah, this is in our job, this is not, we'd like to add this, or we'd like to add that. So, we're basically done. It's just a matter of making sure that it's checked. And then, after we've done that and it's absolutely approved, then we, then my role is to sit with all of the employees then to say, this is a structure that we have, and then this is what we do going forward. And I may have to spend a little bit more time with my directors and those folks who actually conduct reviews to help them understand what it is they really need to be after when they go through this process. Because I'm totally switching them around. Rather than a long conversation at the end of the review period, I am asking them to have a conversation with the employees at the start of the review period to tell them what is expected of their job. And it's strictly a function of the job, not the employees in the job. So, if I've got seven account clerks, the core responsibilities are going to be consistent for those seven. It's like hurdles. This is all about the job. How well you perform them is kind of where we want to land and really understand.
I've got one final question. I apologize for backtracking like this.
No problem.
But I believe you mentioned our bottom threshold was about 80%.
Let me say...
Comparison. I wanted to know what actually our true bottom comparison level was, where are we bottomed out at?
Let me say, when we say 80%, what we like to do is a 50% range spread.
Right.
So, it's 20% on either side. The reason we like to do that is because a few years back, the OFCCP decided that if pay was within two standard deviations, then it was fair. And that's about a 50% range spread. Now, I'll go on to say, they've changed their mind. So, now they're all over the place as to what they believe is fair. So, when we develop a structure, what we want to make sure of is that it meets those legal ramifications. So, if my employees are paid within the range that we've identified for them, then we say pay is fair. So, that's kind of why we have that 50% bottom, with 20% on either side. So, with that, you've got maybe three or four employees, and it's not a lie because the total is $4,000, which is less than a quarter of a half a percent of your entire salary budget. But let me also say, though they are paid below the minimum of the range, we are still not recommending that you just hand over $4,000. I absolutely believe that given increases, whatever it should be, should be tied to performance.
Can I ask your opinion just on the top pay? You know, we kind of debated, if somebody's at the top of the pay structure, what is your opinion on how they should be handled?
If they're at the top of the pay structure, and we've got a legitimate performance management system, which we, the city of Gardner, will have as soon as I'm done, what we recommend, let's say, hopefully there's not a Danny in the room. So, uh-oh, there must be. I won't even look back.
I'm not sure he works for the city.
Okay, good. He does not work for the city, but now he does. So, Danny is paid above, and let's say Danny has probably been doing this job for about 26, 27 years. He does an excellent job, but most importantly, we've identified job objectives with standards of performance. We still have to do Danny's review, though he's paid above the maximum of the range. So, when we conduct his review, let's then say he is an exceptional performer. Remember I mentioned that salary increase matrix? What we've then identified is that if we've got high performers, and they are in a certain comp ratio, then their increases start to lessen, and that's because they're already paid, you know, significantly higher than the midpoint. And so, Danny is like totally above the maximum, but if he was just slightly within, let's say he would have gotten a 2% increase. What we recommend is that you give him a 2% lump sum adjustment. So, don't adjust his base pay, but write him a check for that 2% of what he would have been paid. Because, remember I said, on an annual basis, we are going to look at adjusting the structure. And so, he eventually will work his way back in.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
I would be interested, I don't know, Brian or Laura, I'm assuming that you guys were involved in this, what's your perspective on the process? Feedback, thoughts?
I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
Oh, actually, I am.
Yeah.
I promise I won't hold it against you guys, and I'm done with the numbers anyway, so...
Go ahead, Brian. I'll finish up if you don't say anything.
I mean, I thought it was a very thorough process. We were asked a lot of questions. I just really was curious tonight to see how it was all presented. You know, we gave a lot of information, but we weren't exactly sure what was to be recommended.
But you feel confident with the exercise that went through?
Yes, I do.
With everybody?
Yes, I do. I mean, whether you say 80% or 90% are paid at midpoint, I mean, that's the council's policy decision on what you do there. But I thought the process was very fair, very good.
Right. I concur. I think it was very thorough. Sorry, say the name again.
I think it was very thorough. I completely concur with what he said, and the process is as Ms. Meriwether laid it out. And I have had feedback from some of our managers who thought it was thorough as well.
And let me say, over the last couple of years, there's been a lot of movement in municipalities conducting compensation studies. And so, I think there's going to be some competition for talent. I don't know what the level of talent is going to be, except the city of Hutchinson did, you know, pay a lot to look at public works and the utility director and how that should all look. And so, your next-door neighbor, Olathe, is looking at their compensation work. Unified governments of Wyandotte County is looking at theirs. So, everybody is, again, looking at compensation. And I am confident that we've given you back enough information that you can be competitive in what you pay, even if it means that we have to take a look at different levels of complexity within a job family.
I thoroughly enjoyed the information. Thank you very much for coming and sharing with us this evening. We will be taking this under advisement at the future.
Yeah, so what are we going to do? I mean, so, from my perspective...
That's what I was going to say. Next steps.
That one's mine, too? Okay. Because what I, now that I've gotten all the feedback from my directors, I've got one or two positions that I've got to reshuffle. And so, then we'll bring that back, and then we're almost done with the performance management system. And then, it's a matter of addressing and introducing the performance management system to the general employee group. And then, it's all about doing training for my directors and for my managers as it relates to the performance management system. So, I think yours, don't let me get confused about when your fiscal year starts and ends. Calendar year, your calendar. So, we're already within the calendar year. What we then say, do you do all of your reviews at one point? Very good. And so, is it review time, or we missed review time?
We just completed review time.
Okay. So, with completing review time, you still need to use the system that you had introduced the early part of the year. So, you're on, you're old. And now, coming in, my managers and directors will sit with their employees to say, this is where you are in the new structure. These are the job objectives and standards of performance that we're going to be looking at. It's going to be a little bit longer than this. And these are the core competencies. So, going forward through this year, this is what you'll be held accountable for. If there's someone with some issues, I'm recommending that we take a look at having a conversation with them quarterly. If not, then I like an informal conversation every six months. Informal meaning, if I catch you at the water fountain and I still see there's some things that's not going right, that there's a conversation. Because this really is a system to set my employees up to succeed and not to fail. So, that's kind of where we are. Only because if it was a substantial dollar amount below that 80 percentile, then I would be saying, Cheryl, we need to take a look at this right away, so then we can start moving folks up. But it's not. And so, now we're starting to go forward, conversation with the employees as to what the performance management system looks like, another conversation with my managers and directors and say, this is what we have. What else do we need to change about it? And then, moving forward, that's then when we anticipate we will start with those increases according to the salary increase matrix. That would be the end of our 2015 period.
See, I guess, I mean, I'm just going to weigh in here. I don't agree with that. I think that we budgeted, we knew this stuff was going to happen and this stuff was going to come back. And, I mean, we've been looking for this type of information, I'll say, since I've been on the council. And I think that, I feel like we're penalizing employee base by not taking action where it makes sense to do it. I mean, it, I just...
That's what I was sitting here thinking. I mean, we budgeted for it and done studies and things. I think we should take some appropriate action with this and not wait until next fiscal year.
Right. I mean, I agree with the review, and I think going forward, but I think that we should have information from last year's performance and that we should be looking at how we can integrate and move forward with some of this stuff for this year. That's my opinion. That's my opinion.
No, I, I would agree because that's, we were, we'd make everybody wait like eight or nine months.
Right, I, yeah, I don't.
That's it. Let me just say, that's an easy fix. I mean, that, that really is an easy fix. It's just simply now a matter of looking at the salary increase matrix and saying, your comp ratio is here. This is how, this is what your review from last year. I cannot remember the number of ratings that you currently have.
Three.
Three. I just then need to readjust the salary increase matrix to match up with the three ratings that you currently have. And it's, it's just a quadrant, a few quadrants. And then you then would give that increase. And let me tell you why I think it's important to be that consistent. It's because I don't want someone in public works to give a ten percent increase and somebody in parks to give a four or five percent increase. I really want them to do it consistently across, but that really is an easy fix. So it's just a matter of redoing a salary increase matrix, tying it to the current comp ratios, because we probably need to make sure that we've updated their pay, because I might be just a little bit off in where those numbers are. I turned around to look at Mac, who sent it to me. So I might just be a little off, but take a look at that, run the comp ratios, use the same salary increase matrix. And I will say this, when we've targeted, let's say we target it three percent for the entire group, if there's someone who exceeded the expectations and with a low comp ratio, then we're recommending that they would get a five or six percent increase rather than a three percent, because they're already low with the comp ratio, and then moving them up faster.
Which is pretty typical. Yeah, I, I would just really like for us to get to something this year, like, soon.
I agree.
That looks like consensus.
Oh, I think that's a great idea. Well, you know what? I'm gonna go home and redo that comp ratio thing now. And then I'll send it to you guys. Any more questions? No?
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys. I appreciate it.
Okay. Uh, we've got a second presentation item this evening. We're going to discuss, we're gonna have a presentation discussion of the fire study for Johnson County Fire District Number One, contract versus consolidation. Laura Gorley, good evening. I'll look at him and go. The, the good stuff's about to happen. Actually, let's let the migration handle it. It's a little noisy for a moment. Jody's gonna step out for a little bit.
Jody, Jody made a mistake. It's up front.
Okay. The din is down. Uh, Laura, good evening.
Good evening. So, in 2010, the city entered into a three-year agreement through December 2013 with Johnson County Fire District of Fire and EMS Services. And the agreement contained options for three additional one-year extensions for 2014 through 2016. Thus far, council has approved the incentives for two of those three years, for 2014 and 2015. You approved the 2015 extension at the November 17th meeting last year. Also at that meeting, the fire district proposed consolidation for the 2016 year. Subsequently, council asked for an analysis for the cost of consolidation versus renegotiating a future contract, and that's what I'm here to present. The original agreement contains language stating that consolidation of the entities is the intent, but when there would be no increase in mill rate for Gartner citizens. The study was premised on projecting a mill levy equality between the city and the fire district. And this slide shows how the mill rates compare currently. So for the 2015 budget year, we're paying 1.225 million. And Gardner mills, that's nine point zero zero nine. Fire district mills, eleven point two four six. That's what those numbers mean. 2016, the projection, and the contract is for 1.286. Eight point four one five Gardner mills, nine point six three five fire district mills. And that's based on the projection for the increase in values as well. So it's essential for understanding mill levy equality, and it's, which is essentially the same thing as assessed valuation equality, to have a little bit of background on how assessed valuation works. And while the governing body may know it, those listening on the video may not, so I'll go through it. Every year, the county appraiser appraises property's market value and then calculates an assessed value using the appropriate statutory assessment rate for the type of property. A mill is a measure of representing one dollar for every one thousand dollars of assessed valuation. So it's the assessed value that is needed to calculate property tax. The fire district's taxing area includes Logistics Park KC and New Century, both of which include abated properties. The largest driver of the fire district's growth is new development at Logistics Park KC, assumed to be, assumed to be abated for the study projections. Although the county appraiser annually evaluates market value of abated properties, the assessed value of abated properties is officially always zero, because Kansas law says if it's abated, it's a hundred percent abated. It's only through payment in lieu of tax agreements that we achieve partial abatements. In the study, assumptions were made to calculate the taxing value for partial abatements. So as a starting point, based on the information we received from county appraiser Welcome in February, this is the rounded value of the city's assessed valuation and the fire district's assessed valuation. Gardner is at a hundred and forty-one million assessed valuation. Fire district, seventy-six million, roughly fifty-four percent of Gartner's. Every year, in this study, three variables changed. The assessed valuation of Gardner, the assessed valuation of the fire district, and the amount of money needed to pay for fire service. I will point out that for the purpose of my study, I assumed no significant economic development for Gardner. And I did assume projections for the fire district to increase 1.3 million square feet at Logistics Park KC for the 2017 budget year, and a million and a half square feet annually thereafter. As county appraiser Welcome said that, we could expect that. Two methods were used to determine the cost. That's the third variable I talked about, the cost of the fire services. One was annual estimated contractual payments, which I converted into mills so we could project parity. And then the other was an estimate of the mill levy assuming consolidation of the city's evaluation and the count, and the fire district's valuation combined. For the annual contractual payments, in this method, I was projecting mill levy equality for the two entities, which is essentially, like I said, the same thing as assessed valuation equality. Was modeled using two different starting points for the contract dollar amount. And I used two different annual inflation rates for the contract dollar amounts for sensitivity analysis, because I wanted to see how much the contractual payment inflation rate impacted the levy parity. So for one inflation rate, I used seven percent, because that's one percent of less than our two-year average growth rate now that we're growing again. And then I also used a double-digit inflation rate of ten percent, which actually exceeds our two-year projected growth rate. So I was looking for something a little less, something a little more. Consolidation, I also modeled it two ways. For consolidation, I calculated by dividing the fire district's budget that we had last year for the two thousand, for the November meeting, over the projected combined assessed valuation of both entities to determine what the mill rate would be to be approximate to the nine mills that we're paying today. So when I did the modeling two ways, I took the fire district costs from their budget and I held it constant over the modeling period, no increase in their expenditures. And then I did another version for sensitivity, where I took their budget and I used an annual inflation rate of three percent. So in conclusion, under the contract, under the contractual scenario, the modeling projects assessed valuation or mill levy parity in 2019, regardless of the contractual dollar amount starting point or the inflation rate applied for the contractual payment. In the consolidation scenario, modeling projects nine point mills, nine point zero mills, which is what we're being paid, what we're paying today, reached in 2019, assuming the fire district annual budget increase of three percent, or if it never changed and it held stagnant over the modeling period, it could be 2018. So that was the really high-level summary of all that pages and pages of stuff. So if you have any questions, I'm here.
So, uh, flipping over to, uh, the page with the average cost to the homeowner.
Oh, that's, that was a supplemental study. So.
Are, are we gonna get to that, or?
Uh, I wasn't. That was the, for your information. So for people listening on video or in the audience, I also had a supplemental study that I did that was not requested by the governing body. It simply shows comparison of the other fire districts in Johnson County, and what it shows is we have the best deal. Gardner's cost is the lowest among the others. So what's happening in that study is it's the average cost, I'm sorry, it's the cost of fire services to an average homeowner. So that's why I included the tables that had the values of city comparison and zip comparison, because the average home changes in the different districts. But that's still, an average home in those fire districts is paying that amount of money for fire service, is what that was showing. But that was not part of what you guys asked me to do tonight. It was just extra information showing you got the best deal right now.
Well, I just had a question about the, the numbers that were used, uh, for the mill levy in, in that study.
So what page are you looking at?
Well, the one with the.
All the colors on it?
Yeah. Green and yellow.
Okay, hold on. Okay, what about it?
Uh, you have fifteen, uh, point four four eight.
Right.
But then the, uh, analysis step ten, I think you had like twelve point three four two.
Because a mill value changes as the assessed valuation changes. So this is their mills now. And there's, oh, there's other components in the mill, in assessed valuation.
Doesn't the fifteen, doesn't the fifteen include a bond?
There is bond included, but, but I just took that, I took their cost of their budget, all their cost in their budget, and spread it over the consolidation, so it should have accounted for that.
But, but we don't pay for the bond, right? The bond should be taken out. The three mills for the bond, that doesn't apply to us, does it?
If you consolidated.
Right.
It would, oh, I, I actually called county, um, I think it's county clerk John Bartelak and asked him that very question, and he said he couldn't answer that question right now. But I don't, I cannot answer that. But what I'm saying is, I took, so you're looking at the twelve, hold on, in the study.
Uh, analysis step number ten.
Okay. Let me catch up with you.
With three percent budget inflation.
Okay. What I'm saying is, the fire district's three point three budget, that came right from their budget document, which would include the cost to also pay the bonds. And you're saying we wouldn't pay that? I'm saying I can't answer that question because county, county clerk or whatever he is, John Bartelak couldn't answer that question. So I left it in. Cause I, I couldn't take it out if he couldn't tell me whether or not he could take it out.
Potentially it could come out.
I, I, I.
It potentially could.
I guess so, because I asked him that question, he said, I can't answer that question. Okay. So he, he needed a lot more information than that. And I, I would assume that a part of that information would also have come from, from the fire district, not from me. I really can't answer those questions for him. But he didn't ask me any.
Chris, you look like you were wanting to hear him.
No, I'm not, no.
Not anyone?
So what you're saying is, if, I think what you're saying, let me try to go backwards with this.
Yeah.
You're saying if the fire district's costs were somewhat less than three point three million, because that's just one year's worth, so there would be a bond payment every year, then parity could be achieved sooner. Answer yes. But I can't answer whether or not that is a true statement to start with.
Right.
And I did not model that because I could not answer that question.
Or not parity achieved sooner, but, but the difference would be less.
The difference would be less, but if you're starting with something less and you're working your way together, parity could be, I don't know how much impact it would have. You're talking about every year there would be one budgeted bond payment. You wouldn't take the whole amount of the bonds and say, we're not gonna take four million dollars this year or whatever, because it's year by year that you make your payments, and that's what you're budgeting. So it would, it would have impact? Some impact.
Laura, if the intermodal facility continues to grow quicker than expected, would that hasten the timeline to where the utilization would occur?
Not very much.
Nope.
Not very much, because remember, it's abated.
Right, exactly.
And the fire district gets their share of the abated amount. So what, what would really have, what would really impact it a lot faster would be if something in the fire district were to gain significant commercial development instead of industrial. Not, or, all abatements maximum is ten, ten years. So if some of the abatements were less than ten years, I'm making, I made the assumption for the purpose of this, that all the stuff at Logistics Park was ten years. But if some of them were less, it could impact. Or the ones at New Century that I also modeled, I said they didn't, I have no way of knowing. I said they didn't expire during the modeling period, because it was only, what, four years, four or five years? If they do, that would also have some impact, but not as much as commercial development or something else. Cause, cause remember, commercial developments were, for our little example we used at the economic symposium, thousand Gardner homes. Industrial was, abated industrial was three hundred. So there's a big difference between commercial and industrial. So if it grew faster, it would have impact, but probably not years impact, parity faster.
But if we were to get something, let's say, next month, that would make, we would continue to decline as far as the cost, almost never getting parity.
Yes, that's exactly right. So what I modeled was, we don't get anything, they get stuff. Because I was trying to show you the worst case or whatever. But in other words, if Gardner grew faster, we would not achieve parity. You're right.
But, but, I mean, this contract is only for next year, right?
Right now, you only have an existing contract with an extension for 2016. The councilman, I believe it's Councilman Freeman, is the one that specifically said, I want to see something that shows me extending the contract. So I kinda went with the same kinda thing we had going versus consolidation.
I think this is exactly what we asked, to see, I mean, the, the financial impact between the existing agreements they have with different, and, and different, versus what we have, since ours is a little bit unique and so.
They gave you, like I said, two different starting points, two different inflation rates, one single digit, one a little bit less than what we're doing, one double digit, more than what we're doing. Kinda gave you a worst case, best case kinda thing.
Can we pull the slide up again that just had the, uh, the, just the baseline comparison? It would have been.
The starting point?
Um, no, the one that showed, no, uh, the endpoint for where in, uh, that one, nope, this one, with the mills on it.
That's your current contract.
Yeah, that's.
So two thousand, right. So 2016 is either one point two eight six or one point three. But you can, there's a clause in the agreement that says that you can agree to seven percent increase if our market value increased more than five, and it did.
Right.
So that's why I gave you both.
That's the red numbers.
That's the red numbers.
Right.
So, and, and looking at this then, the other, the other community, or the other people that are part of fire district are at the nine eight one nine. And we would theoretically be at eight five seven six from a mill impact perspective.
If my projections are good.
Right.
That's what I'm, yes, yes, yes.
And again, I know it always comes back, what's the value of a mill currently in Gardner?
Well, at the moment, it's gone up just a hair. I used to tell you it was eighteen dollars and forty cents, because an average home was roughly a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Now your average home is roughly a hundred and sixty-six, sixty-seven, so it's usually nineteen, twenty.
Okay.
So a difference in this scenario of, of one point three mills, is that?
Right.
Roughly.
Right. So you would take that times, times twenty bucks annually. That's, that's exactly right.
Do we anticipate hearing back from this John Bartelak fellow?
He has nothing more to say until there's something to, I, I got the impression, he didn't, what he said is he didn't have enough information to go on, and I gave him the kind of. to go on. And I gave him the kind of, you know, scenario that we were talking about consolidation, maybe, or what if? I did the whole what-if thing and he said he needed to see a whole lot more information from the fire district. But I didn't, he didn't elaborate. He said, "I just can't answer that question right now." And no, I don't know what else to ask him just yet. So I'll be happy to call him again if you have something that you want me to... He was not committing.
I guess from my perspective, so we, at some point in time, will maybe renew this contract, right, for 2016. Either way we go, we have to make some longer-term decisions. And I think that those discussions for those decisions need to happen much sooner rather than later. So I guess from my perspective, I would like to know whether it would be Rob, whoever needs to be involved from both the fire district and us and the county, that we start sitting down and really getting some of those questions answered and having those discussions because 2016, you know, is gonna be here before we know it. And I think that we, that the further in advance we start planning for this, the better off we're gonna be.
Exactly to your point. I'll just give you the heads up now that March 23 policy work session, I was going to ask you what's consensus directive on 2016 because you still have one year. And then, then what? And so that's kind of a policy decision, but that's among yourselves. What will your direction to staff be, both for the one-year extension that you still have? And then, you know, the contract specifically states as it is now, the intent is consolidation. But that's how you get there or what you agree to, that's back to you all. But I will be asking that on Monday, again.
Well, and as far as actionable items on this, when is this anticipated to come before council? For 2016, are you saying?
Monday. I'm gonna ask you Monday if you've got a decision. For 2016, for your one year.
What the decision needs to come, really come down to at this point is beyond 2016.
Right.
And where we look at that equalization and what should...
Well, actually, your fire district proposed consolidation. The decision is in or yes or no on that. And then, yeah, and then in the future.
Right.
Right.
On the 23rd, so is that a formal meeting? Is that just?
It's a work session.
So it was already on that.
So we will have representation from the fire district?
They're here tonight. I don't, there's nothing more to talk about from my perspective. It's up to you all now. Unless you didn't like something in the study, I don't have anything else to say.
Chief?
You want me to stand aside?
Either of you, you'll certainly get time next week as well if you wanna take a minute and digest this or if you've got something to say at this point.
I just wanna comment on a couple of items here. The bond, I wanna address the bond situation first. We, as a fire district, went out and we got a bond prior to the consolidation on it. And that bond stays with the people at the time that we got the consolidation. And it's non-transferable. So, you know, according to our bond people is that it's non-transferable. So if we were to merge, still the citizens of the county that originated the bond are committed to paying that bond until sun sets up. So I'm gonna address that first and let you know that that's tiny hot steps. The other question that you had was in reference to the 15 mills and difference between the 12. Well, that 15 is definitely a 12 because the 15 is with the bond in it. And that needs to be taken out when we're talking about our relationship with the city of Gardner and moving forward with that because we're dealing about operating, we're dealing with operating bond, mills only. Now, in the event when we do, or if, or when, or whenever we come together, we do get another bond, then the citizens of Gardner as well as everybody in our district will be, you know, they'll be responsible for paying that bond until sun sets. We would like, I've got a couple of board members here, we would surely like to get in and have a work session to talk to you guys about this. We kinda went over our presentation earlier. We kinda went over different thoughts on what we've done already with the ISO and that money that we took from the ISO and the savings we've already shown. And as Laura said, the mil now comes down to $20. Well, we sure wanna talk about that to you. So I would ask, on behalf of my board behind me, is that we do have a work session where we can all sit down and we can talk about this and together and collaborate just together instead of bits and pieces at a time. So that would be my challenge. And my question to you up there is, you know, we get together, we sit down together and work through this.
I'm sure that that's something that could be arranged. We're going into budget season. It's work session after work session after council meeting after council.
And this is something that, you know...
What's one more?
Well, but Mayor, we need to know because it's gonna take a little bit of doing to get this done. If you're looking, you know, if you were to come up here and say we wanna do this next year, I don't know if we can do it by next year because I know we have to have some, our lawyers need to get together and there's some legalities involved in this. I don't know what the extent of it is. I don't know if we need to go to Pika and do some work up there. But the sooner that we can get together and figure out where we're going in our destiny because right now, we, as a fire department, our vision is obscured right now on where we're going because...
So I guess from my perspective, and I don't know if this happens next week, if it's a presentation or collaborative or what have you, but I think it would be beneficial to hear Rob from the fire district. Why, I mean, you understand us sitting up here and basically we have this deal for 2016 that is less than what it would be without it, right? So we need to understand why. Why would we do that, I guess? So if that could be the approach from the fire district or the board members to say, you know, these are the best, I don't know what that looks like, but I think that's the struggle is why would we do that, you know?
So do I got two weeks then to put something together? Is that what I'm hearing? Or are we talking about a week from today?
From today.
Monday's work session, schedule's pretty full for policies and stuff to share with, or you all about how, that's pretty quick for probably for Rob, but we're here, sir, whatever you'd like.
Well, then, we had a work session to see, we can have a work session before a council meeting in April. I realize we're trying to set budget goals and initiatives at this meeting on the 23rd, but, you know, we can set a goal and initiative but take it under advisement. You know, as we, as everybody learns every year, as we learned, definitely last year, it's not over until it's over. And if we can work something out so that we can get them back for a work session. And it sounds like we need to get Dottie and Ryan talking with whoever the bond council is for the fire district.
I think Mr. Bartelak needs to be involved because something is causing confusion on his end. And he's the man that's gonna find the...
And I've talked to him on some other issues. So, I mean, I can call him tomorrow.